All right, I've got six o'clock. I'm gonna call the-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've moved the acknowledgements and recognitions up just to be mindful of when folks come to visit, they can get in for those and then get out. So we'll start with those and then move on to communication from the public. Two things to acknowledge today. A team of five Prairie Ridge Middle School students completed in the Science Bowl hosted by Ames National Laboratories. Twenty-eight teams from across the state participated in this intense competition at ISU. The event began with five round-robin matches, after which the top eight teams advanced to the double-elimination bracket. Prairie Ridge battled their way through the bracket to reach the championship match against Ames Middle School. In a hard-fought final round, Prairie Ridge put up an incredible fight, challenging Ames Middle School every step of the way. Ultimately, our team secured an impressive second-place finish, bringing home the runner-up trophy. We're incredibly proud of our students for their dedication and preparation leading up to the competition, and their hard work and passion for science truly paid off. Congratulations to the entire team for this outstanding achievement. And then, secondly, we'd like to congratulate both Ankeny High School and Ankeny Centennial for qualifying a combined seventeen wrestlers for the state wrestling tournament. Cale Vandemark of Ankeny Centennial finished as a runner-up, and the Jags crowned Max DeBolt as the first state champion in boys' wrestling program history. Congratulations to all athletes who wrestled at the state tournament. All right, moving on to communication from the public. On behalf of the board, I'd like to invite Mike Rooney to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name. Thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes, so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. This board meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting, which includes your comments, will be maintained on YouTube for five years. Thank you for your support of our school district.
Do I need to say my address and all that stuff anymore? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna read off of this, I apologize. Thanks for letting me speak here tonight. The reason I am here speaking is that I feel it was important that I express my concerns on some recent decisions and what I feel are some landmines you are facing as a board. At the last meeting, you voted to put in place the school budget guarantee with no discussion other than the questions asked by Director Barthol and her questions, which no one really gave her an answer. It was voted on by the board and not pushed off as she requested. Second, I do not feel that you properly vetted the $7 million that were moved from SAVE to the general fund. No questions were asked on it, but you all voted for it. With that, you know, there may have been a good reason for that, but none of you had a conversation on it at all, and I really don't believe that there's a thorough understanding of why the money was moved or whatnot. But as a community member, I'd like to know that. Along with this, I have followed the direction of spending at the district, and I feel that there has been many things that have been outsourced and, you know, carried up that expenses have been going up. I realize that with inflation, but I don't think you have been properly mitigating ideas on dropping costs and whatnot to offset some of this, because the inflation's not going away. But the biggest problem that you have is your enrollment. You know, when I was on the board, I was very fortunate to take and have increasing enrollment every year. You know, we've seen that the enrollment has slowed down, and SSA being just over 2% annualized, you guys are gonna have to be very careful with the inflation and whatnot going forward. Now I'm just kinda winging this, so just FYI. What I ask is that, you know, you reviewed the board decisions in making these cuts, looking at stuff so you can fund, you know, your most important resource, your teachers. You know, there's gonna be a lot of expenses going forward on your new hub. I think that needs to be planned for better. I need, that needs to be publicized better to the community, because as I understand it, you're gonna bring a bond later this year. And I was fortunate, when I was on the board, that we got our bonds passed. But just before, one of the reasons I got on the board was that there was a bond failure. And if you fail on this bond going forward, I really think there's a risk of not being able to get this done for a couple of years, because you're gonna have to go back. And once you don't get it passed the first time, it's gonna be very difficult. And I'm not here to throw stones by any means. If you guys need answers or questions, I know people that'll help you. It doesn't have to be me. There's other people in the community that I know would be more than happy to take and help and work on things. I'm probably not one of them that you need. You know, my biggest concern is, you know, without the vetting that I haven't seen at meetings, I've watched meetings and whatnot, you guys aren't asking questions. You're just basically rubber-stamping stuff, in my opinion. Whoops, sorry. And I think it's very important that you ask the questions as a board to the people that are presenting the numbers to you, so you're making good decisions. I guess my ask to you is, you know, better vet your decisions on how you're spending the money, lay out better on what's going on with this hub. If you go to the website, you know, there isn't a good clarity yet on where it's going, how it's going, how you're gonna fund it going forward. I mean, if there's one thing to build this, and in two years, how are you gonna staff it? You know, what does that staffing look like five years from now? How does that work and whatnot? So with that, thank you for your time and good luck.
Thanks, Mike. Moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent and consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about items on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Moving on to information only. Item A is an amendment to the 2425 school calendar. Dr. Pro, could you speak to this, please?
We are introducing an amendment to our calendar that I recommend that the board vote on in our next meeting. Just due to weather, we've had to do late starts, a few early dismissals, and cancel classes. And for that reason, because of how we count our hours, we're in need of making up those hours. And so my recommendation is that we use our April 14th day as a make-up school day for our students.
What questions do we have?
Just a plan of communication, just text message, emails, kind of like how the school closures go to parents.
So what, once, so once this, once we, after this board meeting, I'm gonna turn it over to Samantha as far as how we plan on getting this information out prior to the next board meeting.
So similarly to when we pass the calendar the first time, when we send out the draft calendar to the community, let them know when the board vote is going to be, we'll send out a draft amended calendar to the community in the newsletter this week and let them know that it'll be voted on at the March 31st board meeting, so that folks have time to review it and attend the board meeting with any comments they might have.
And I wanna point out, at the bottom of the calendar, there is a different notation that we've used in the past. This just allows us, hopefully there won't be any other pop-up blizzards between now and the end of the school year, but it would allow us to make adjustments quickly and ensuring that the board is aware of it.
Any other questions? All right. Let's move on to item B, the 10-year academic and facility plans. Dr. Pro?
And so for this presentation, the team is gonna stay at their tables, and I'll be speaking from here at the dais. And so we've got it up. And so I'm really looking forward to the questions that the board and then eventually the public may have about this 10-year plan. The Ankeny Community School District has consistently worked to expand and improve academic programs while also renovating and constructing new facilities, all in alignment with the vision set by the district in 2018. Today, we are excited to present our 10-year plan, a roadmap for building a future of choice, opportunity, and success for all students.
So to better understand where we're going, it's important that we understand where we've been. Our district's strategy to responsibly manage growth has positioned us well, both now and into the future. As you know, in the last 20 years, the enrollment of our district has more than doubled from around 5,000 students in 2004 to nearly 13,000 today. We planned for rapid growth, and we adjusted those plans to keep up with the large increases, especially of our elementary-age students coming to our schools. We paved the way for other metro districts in the work that we did when we split the district into a two-feeder system back in 2013. And in recent years, our planning has led to the construction of Heritage Elementary, Abbey Grove Elementary, additions to both of the high schools, and significant renovation at Ankeny Stadium.
Connected to the three pillars of our strategic plan that are focused around rigorous and relevant academics, talented people, and supportive environments. We also developed our new mission statement, which anchors our work, and along with the strategic plan, has guided our post-secondary readiness efforts and facilities master plan that led to the recommendation for a great level of configuration change, additional facilities for fine arts, athletics, and activities, and the Innovative Hub. An initiative intended to further enhance learning experiences and opportunities that connects students, businesses, and industries in unique and meaningful ways and reinforces a student's plan to pursue higher education or jump straight into a career. The hub will be structured to support teaching and learning that fully develops the 21st-century skills necessary for success. For the past several decades, Ankeny has been a leader in education, planning for and adapting to substantial growth. The future will make Ankeny a leader in designing the academic and extracurricular experiences for our students as growth steadies and the city becomes more fully developed. A thriving school district doesn't happen by chance. It's built through careful planning, strategic investments, and a shared commitment to giving students the best possible education, opportunities, and experiences. The following three slides depict our vision for the next 10 years of academic programming and extracurricular offerings for the Ankeny Community School District, as well as the facilities needed to support these programs. This plan is about smart, forward-thinking investments that keep our district competitive, our students thriving, and our community strong. By consistently planning for the future, we avoid costly emergencies, provide better opportunities, and ensure that our school remains, our schools remain a source of pride for generations to come. I'll give you a few minutes to look at this long-range academic program in the three phases that are being presented. As you can see, many of these academic programs we've been discussing, but I wanted to lay it out for you to see the vision. I've intentionally left years off the slides, because these plans will be fluid. Some items may be able to, may be able to be pursued from Phase 2 before we've completed the full list of Phase 1. Or we may add to the list, but this represents our current thinking. We receive a lot of communication about our athletic, fine arts, and activity facilities. Our hope is to lay out the vision for new and renovated facilities to help our community better understand the process and plans to pursue each of these priorities. I'll give you a few seconds to read it. Here, we've shown the funding, next, thank you. Here, we've shown the next, we've shown the funding streams and needed facilities to support these plans. As you can see, to support this work, we plan to pursue general obligation bonds every four years. Mr. Brown will share more details about the financial strategy shortly. So the fun part. In the next several slides, you'll get to see our vision for Phase 1 come to life. First, we'll look at the concept of the Performance Center for our athletic programs. We plan for these facilities at both high schools to offer expanded opportunities for conditioning, training, and practice for many of our sports and activities, including dance and cheerleading. Next, we will look at an updated rendering of the Innovative Hub, planned to be located at the Northview Middle School campus. Here are a few stills of the exterior. This is looking north. And I guess this is, we're looking northwest. Please note, we've planned parking for Ankeny Stadium and Northview Middle School and have plans to relocate the shared 8-9 baseball and softball fields. With the, with a successful bond, we will begin planning what that transition looks like going into the next school year for both 8-9 baseball and softball fields, the relocation, and parking to accommodate the activities located on that campus. These next slides, we've seen before. These are interior concepts that we believe will still be integrated into the hub located on Northview's campus. And as we transition into, you know, we have this vision for both our academic programming and facilities. What is the plan around getting this funded? And what will we do, what will the plan be for not only our GO-bonds that we hope are successful, but then also how we plan to utilize Pebble and SAVE? Mr. Brown?
So I wanted to walk you guys through kind of the overall funding that we have coming into the district. Here, you can see all of different funds that do come in. Sorry, it's kinda small, but trying to get on one slide was difficult. But on the top, you can see the different revenue sources and how that comes into the district. And then the bottom side of it, you can see the allowable expenditures that we can have within each of those funds. The first four funds, general fund, management, Pebble, and debt service, all relate to the tax rate and what we're receiving from there. What we're looking at doing when we present here in the next couple of slides is really looking at Pebble, debt service, and SAVE, the three middle ones, and how we've been doing things and how we're looking forward to doing things in the future, so that, one, we can have the best-quality facilities and the best-quality program that we can have from a general fund standpoint. Over the past few years, we have done a wonderful job on making sure we're fiscal responsible, bringing down the tax rate. What we didn't put on here is, prior to that, in 2011, '12, we were closer to $22.50 for our overall tax rate. So we've really dropped it down. But during this drop in tax rate, we've also had expansive growth with our student enrollment. That is starting to level off now. I'm also trying to find a way to kind of stabilize our tax rate based on the stabilization of our overall student enrollment. Here is a look kind of at our peers, our close districts that we have going on right now. Not saying that was a good comparison as to what's going on, because every district has something different going on within it, different makeup, different student enrollment, all that sort of stuff. But here's an overview as to where people are sitting as of this current year, compared to where we are sitting at the $16.05 with the rounding. So, a quick history lesson of how we've been doing things in the past. In years past, we have a lot of construction coming through the Pebble, and we've held SAVE and basically built up the fund balance to help build future buildings. We were expanding for growth. We didn't know exactly how much growth, where it was gonna be, elementary, middle, high school, what was gonna happen within there. Over the past couple of years, we have really started to stabilize within there. And so in the, for future reference, what we're trying to do is, one, help out our general fund. I'll go through that here in the certified budget presentation here shortly. But really looking at Pebble, using these, using Pebble for these different funding sources. One, we can do our ongoing maintenance from an activity standpoint, technology devices for students and staff, district-wide non-instructional software, making sure we have state-of-the-art software to help us out with HR, with technology, with finance, with whatever it may be from that side of things. SAVE, we've built up our SAVE fund balance over the years. We're sitting on about $27 million within there. Assuming we're gonna be building other buildings, that has started to go on the wayside. And so now, how can we utilize those funds to help our existing buildings, to make sure that our roofs are good, HVAC, concrete for parking lots, other different building furnishes, whatever it may be, so that we can keep our buildings, existing buildings, to the highest-quality standards as possible? And then utilizing the GO-bonds for additional construction, Innovative Hub, if we need to completely tear down and build another building, so that we can make sure our buildings aren't falling apart, we can make sure that our students have a high-quality building to walk into, to learn from, within there as well.
So the last thing we wanna walk you through is some key milestones for a bond referendum, so that you have a clear idea of what's ahead and what critical decisions would need to be made. The first phase, as you can see, is all about laying the groundwork. It'll start with finalizing the financial plan and ensuring there's a solid framework for that bond referendum. And then, well, then we'll work on the petition, because we have to ask the community first. Do you want this to go on a ballot? So first, the community has to agree to put it on a ballot, and then later, they vote for it. And that sets us up for the next, the next portion, which is really an awareness campaign. And so from there, we move into community engagement and more action. So, once we get those petitions collected, which would be due on July 7th, you start working on collecting votes. And so the school district's position is gonna be about awareness. We are not allowed to advocate for or against a bond referendum. But it is our objective to clearly communicate to the community what these plans all entail and what exactly they will be voting for, and that there is an election on this. And then that election will be held on November 4th. So that is the life cycle of a bond referendum. And now, it is your, it is open to you all.
At this time, we'll entertain any questions from the board.
Questions?
I have, I have a couple. With the bonds, I know we, I think I saw a GO-bond every four years, so three GO-bonds. Do we know how much we're gonna ask for each of those years? Or like, is it a tiered, like, this time we're gonna ask for 100? Just like, looking big, like, long-range, what that's gonna look like for the taxpayer that might wanna know, like?
Absolutely.
What that looks like?
Mr. Brown?
Yes. So my goal, we have the $4.05 limit, $4.05 limit that we can go up to, which right now, if we wanted to do, go up to that, we'd have essentially $500 million to be able to go do that. But that means we'd increase in tax rate. To maintain our $2.59 debt service tax rate, we could go up to $250 million. But what we're looking at doing, what I'm looking at doing, is about $120 million every four years for the different things going on, to maintain that $2.59, one for expansion, if we really do have the expansion coming back for future years. Or, and then also to make sure that we don't have a debt, I'll call it, it's a debt service levy cliff, so that we can maintain and keep on, keep that trajectory going into the future.
Unpack that cliff a little bit more for us?
Yes, absolutely. So, as I get into the certified budget year, we essentially have $2.59 that we can levy for this coming year. A year from now, so that would be for FY '27, our debt service levy would go from $2.59 down to $0.03. So essentially, our tax rate would automatically drop, because we've done such a good job of prepaying our debts, is that now we won't have any debt to prepay, which then would make that essentially a cliff coming forward, to try to maintain, to make sure that we can support our buildings, support our facilities, maintaining that $2.59 over the long term. But then also building in, from a dollar standpoint, multi-millions of dollars standpoint, building flexibility in case we have expansive growth. If we get 600 kids multi-years a year, then we can do that at that point in time, if it comes to that point. Hopefully then it's your question.
Yep.
I think Director, you got two questions?
I had a, for the Northview Middle School campus, is that a tear-down, a remodel, a little bit of both?
So at this time-
I was clear on that.
So at this time, it's, students will continue to, our eighth through ninth grade students will continue to attend Northview. That decision would have to be made in 2029, leading up to the 2029 GO-bond vote, depending upon success of the hub, how we're drawing students into the hub, and then financially, what's going on in our district and state nationally. We wouldn't make that, that's why Phase 2 is a lot looser, because we're not there yet. But we know exactly what we wanna do with Phase 1. Right now, we could sustain having students in Northview for the foreseeable future. However, in 2028, I look forward to sharing those plans with the community as far as what, you know, what Northview might look like in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of pigging back off the Northview questions. I asked a question earlier about the softball, baseball fields for the eighth and ninth graders. Will those be relocated, so they'll still have the existing facilities to use before the relocation? Or is there gonna be a gap?
No, there will be no gap in services for our kids for those particular activities. Again, upon a successful bond, we will be activating in vision in our construction manager to help support, putting a plan together for what that looks like, not only for having the shared location for the 8-9 softball and baseball fields, but then also a plan for what, constructing, constructing the new parking lot for that campus looks like moving forward.
Okay, so right now, there's not like a plan of, like, where the, those, the location would be, it's still-
We do know that, tendentially, right now, we're looking at the Ankeny campus, both at Ankeny and Southview. Dr. Hawke?
That's correct.
To have the shared field?
Have a shared, yes.
Yeah, we have facilities there that we could update, as well as the new ticket building, restroom building that we just built, and some other areas there.
So is one of those, like, that, that field that's currently there, that, that is kind of like right neck, west of the stadium, like, the track?
Correct. And there's also some areas across Cherry Street.
Because I know that's like, just being over there for like the parade and stuff, it's like, not usable now. So it'd just be like highly renovated and, okay?
That's correct.
And then there's space for a softball field there, too?
Across the street.
Across the street, okay. And parking. Lots of parking.
There's parking there, yeah, like I said, and buildings to support.
Other questions?
Throughout this, we've talked about partnerships, like with the hub and other thing with businesses to help maybe offset cost. Is any of that pre-built into our- Is any of that pre-built into our long-range financing plans, or it would just be a bonus if we were able to secure partnership funding?
So, part of, one of our action teams that Samantha is leading is with our business and industry partners. And so, I think that as we continue to further develop that partnership with those that have been involved, I think if we are able to generate funding to offset some of the equipment needed, then that would influence the $130 million for this first bond that we'd be looking to pursue in November.
Okay. This is just a point of communicate, when we're communicating, maybe always use Athletic Performance Center because you're going to get some fine arts people really excited and then really bummed, just using Performance Center. So, I would always probably use Athletic in front of that, or they might think they're going to get a Performance Center. I know there's going to be additions, but that's what I, when I first looked at, I was like, oh, we're going to get a Performance Center. Oh, it's not the kind of Performance Center I thought it was going to be, so.
So, part of the plan that was part of Phase One are additional spaces for choir, for, for both of our high schools. The Performance Center would include spaces for dance and cheer also.
I was thinking, yeah, choir, show choir, band.
So, the, we, part of our plan would have renovations for the two high schools to add additional spaces for choir.
And then my last question, I guess, on the facility funding page, it has GEO bond, PEPAL, and SAVE and intended use. Is, is there a counter slide that currently shows us current use to compare our current use of these different funds versus what they should be intended to be used on? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, I don't have a slide built in right now because right now, SAVE, we're not using really for anything, that was just built up fund balance within there. PEPAL, we've been using for ongoing maintenance costs.
Okay.
And then, the other side that's not built in here is our general fund, so there's a lot of technology devices, other general funds, non-instructional software that we're , are, we're paying for out of the general fund.
So, that, a lot of that intended use on the GEO bond is in PEPAL right now?
That is additional, additional costs of-
I just meant, in the past, we've been using it for new buildings, building renovations, that's been coming out of PEPAL, not out of GEO.
And we've done a lot of SAVE bonds within there to help this. Well, how we built Happy Grove was a SAVE bond.
Okay.
To help that side of things.
And then, just, are we going to map out a plan? This is what we'll do if the GEO bond passes? This is what we'll have to do if it doesn't?
Absolutely, yep, working through that right now. And then, along the same lines, what happens with, at the state level, what's coming through from a property tax standpoint, because that's going to change a lot of different things that we just don't know. There's a lot of assumptions built in that we just don't know yet at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I think part, the, part of the answer to your question also, as far as what happens if the, the bond isn't, isn't successful, that does pause the facility buildup that's needed for the programming. We do have a plan for the programming, the post-secondary planning that we've been working towards, how to continue to pursue that, but the facilities to match the programs that we were wanting to bring our students would have to be a pause.
Can we, I'm going to stay on this slide for just a second. I want to follow up on what Amy said. So, when, when I see intended use, you, you mean intended use moving forward, is what you mean, not like how they're supposed to be used, but like, what's our vision moving forward?
Correct, yep, absolutely.
So, I'm going to echo what Amy said. It would be helpful, I think, for the board to understand, like, on a historical timeline, right? Like, what we've used them for before, and then what's our vision for, what your vision is for using them forward, so we can provide some, some feedback on that. The other piece I would ask for related to this is, historically, it would be helpful for me to understand with what frequency and for what dollar amount we've asked for GEO bonds. I'd like to just have a sense of that, maybe over the last 15 years. I mean, it, we do put facilities up a lot, and so, understanding how we've kind of bounced back and forth between bond and SAVE. And I, and I get what you're saying, like, we need to shift our thinking into using SAVE for more, we've got 18 buildings that we have to maintain and respond to based on our programming needs. I certainly understand that, but it would be helpful. You know, I'm not going to lie to you, and I see GEO bond every four years, I kind of go, is that what we've been doing? It doesn't feel like that's what we've been doing, you know? So, for me to have a little historical context would be helpful. And I get and appreciate the fact that wanting to keep that 259 rate where it is is impacting a, a big part of that conversation. Other questions from the-
When was the last GEO bond? When was it passed?
2018.
2018.
Yep, and we have the bonds back to 1975, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of history.
Johnny on the spot.
Good history.
Stick with the fires, it's good. I did, I do have one more question about bonds. I should know the answer to this, but there's just been so much with the funnel deadline. Is that bill still alive? Or the proposed bill around you can only bond for up to 80%? Is that still alive?
No, that was dropped last year.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, other questions?
I just had a question, I know, before I asked what our plan was for getting buy-in and feedback from our current teachers and staff on the Innovative Hub, and so, I'm just curious what the general sentiment is from staff, as you guys have made your rounds talking to them and getting feedback, what are you hearing, both positive and concerning from them?
So, we've been going to every building and presenting to them the known information, so there's a lot more tonight than, than we've been able to share with them in the previous meetings, but there's been a lot of excitement. And I, you know, I was, I was just talking to a principal today who, upon hearing Dr. Pruitt present this last week, was like, man, I wish I would have known this at the beginning of the year, and was just really, really excited about the, the future of it. I think they have a lot of practical questions, as one would when you are running a, a school building every single day. So, they have a lot of questions for us that we're just not at the point of answering yet, right? Like, a lot of day-to-day logistics-type questions. And so, those answers will come, but some of the planning needs to happen first.
What other questions do we have?
I just have more of a statement in talking to people in the community about this. They're all excited, but their big question, which they want really clear, is, how much is this going to cost me? And so, I think when we go out there and we're talking about this, we really have to have those facts of like, how that's going to impact them individually and what is the benefit to any impact, so.
Eric, can you just speak to what this is going to cost our community?
Absolutely. So, it's broken into a couple of different things. From a debt service standpoint, it won't cost any additional from that side of things. We're going to keep, like I said before, the debt service levy, try to keep it at that 259 rate that we're currently at today. The side of it that will come into play is from our general fund standpoint, how do we staff it, what electrical needs we have, what, how do we upkeep the building? How does that all play together within there? We're still working through, what does that look like? But then, that also is like a convoluted equation because it's looking at all of our other buildings and departments and all that sort of stuff, too. The overall goal is to not have any tax rate impact on the community in any way, shape, or form, but there's a lot of different things that happen within there, a lot of things that are out of our control from a state standpoint, so we'll find, we'll keep on fine-tuning that as we continue to move on from, or move closer to the GEO bond vote, excuse me.
Eric, have you had a chance to look at, and I get that it's been like, three days, the proposed changes to property tax that dropped at the end of the week last week? Just at a high level, I'm just thinking about that in relationship to this, not having spent any time looking at it myself yet. I'm, I'm curious what your high-level thoughts are. And I also know there's a difference between a proposal and what crosses the finish line.
Correct.
But knowing that it came out of both chambers, you know?
Yes.
It's a little more convincing. So, I'm, I'm curious where your head is at with that.
From a high-level standpoint, I know the state is trying to drop prop, overall property taxes. My biggest concern is, the state said they're going to pick up the difference. Are they able to do that or not? That's a part I don't know. I think that's the wild card that's happening within there, and that's primarily looking at our general fund standpoint, because what they're looking at is a uniform levy, the $5.40, tiering that down over the next five years, I think, to a final rate of like $2.90, if I got my math correctly, correct there. The other standpoint was within our management fund, which has nothing to do with this side of it, but our overall insurance, property casualty, workers' comp, only having us so much of a fund balance in there, and we don't, can't be essentially a bank within that fund balance. Overall, the remaining side of things is really tied to the general fund and what we can do from that side of things. But the state has said within there that they're planning on picking up the difference. I just don't know if they're able to, what that looks like, how does SSA tie into that, sped funding, all that sort of stuff. So, there's a lot of different things within there that we just don't know the answers to yet, and hopefully, we'll get some clarity before it passes the finish line, so then we know, okay, this is what's going to happen from a property tax standpoint, and then, how will the reverse hap, what will happen from the reverse side of things from a state standpoint, and how much will they fund or not fund from that side of things? So, I hope that answers your question.
It does, it doesn't ease my concern, though.
Exactly, does it? I completely agree with you.
What other questions do we have? So, Dr. Pruitt, I do have one more question, actually, before I ask that question. Can we get back to the slide about, with the phases?
For academic or?
Yeah, it's at the beginning. Academic, there we go. I'm sorry, yeah, this one with the, with the phases. Can you talk to us a little bit about why you put these in the phases that you put them in, and what your thinking was around these?
Absolutely. In my discussions out in the community with Chamber, with Rotary, and other organizations, I've talked about how we, as a district, remain competitive in the education market. And so, what we've seen is, there's been an increase in the number of families wanting online options for their, their children, whether that is completely online or a hybrid version, we, we don't know yet. However, based off of what we're seeing with regards to enrollment patterns, I, I believe that we need to explore lifting up an online school for our, our district, and then expanding that outward, once we are able to offer that to our students here in the district. In addition to transitional kindergarten, transitional kindergarten has been wildly successful this year. I think we, on Friday, we had 139 parents to register, register for next year's transitional kindergarten program, and so, we think that that, again, makes us competitive. It, it brings our students that need that support into the district sooner, and then always looking for ways to enhance our ninth through 12th grade programming. Again, providing opportunities for our kids and experiences for our kids, not only in our, in our buildings, but then outside in the community with the, with the business partnerships that we have been able to form. When you go into, so, Phase One are, are things that we're currently exploring or working on. Phase Two is really what we're aspiring to work on, and so, these are, and like I had said earlier, these are fluid, and that's why we don't have a year for each phase. And so, when we look at sixth through eighth grade programming, with the grade level configuration change, you know, we are going to have to look at our programming at the eighth, through sixth to eighth grade, what that looks like, how we can continue to support our kids, how we support them in preparing them for high school programming, and we don't want to be in competition with our high schools, and so, looking at what, what courses we're offering sixth through eighth grade that complement what they will need in, in their high school years. Homeschool assistance, we currently don't have a homeschool assistance program here in Ankeny. We lose to West Des Moines, about 75 students. Let's offer homeschool assistance for our Ankeny residents in their own district. And I think that that's something that we can potentially offer sooner rather than later. However, it's not something that we're currently working on this year, but something that we can begin working on over the summer, looking to fiscal year '27, potentially. Expanded special education support, again, as the funding streams for our AIA changes, districts have to look, think about how we continue to support our students that receive services through IEPs. The board approved the, those behavioral specialist job positions. That was the first step in supporting our kids, both our kids with receiving services through IEPs and our gen ed students who are having challenges with behaviors. The next level of work for us with, when we look at special education, is how we're putting our special ed team together, how we're writing the IEPs, how we're identifying the services that our students actually need in order to match the services that we're able to provide to the students in, in our schools. Phase Three is, again, the hub is the first domino that needs to fall with regards to the grade level configuration change. Upon the successful bond referendum, we would open the hub first, and then, the next year, we would then transition our ninth graders to the high schools, and then convert our, our four middle schools to sixth through, sixth through eighth grade. And then, full-day pre-K is aspirational. We currently don't have the funding to support full-day pre-K. However, I'll continue to advocate for full-day pre-K because similar to transitional kindergarten, I think that that establishes a solid foundation for our, our young students and our students in need that will allow them to be successful in our, in our district, or any district that they may go into.
So, thank you for doing that. You had mentioned, we lose about 75 students to HSA every year, to West Des Moines. Do we have any idea what we lose for online school?
I think it was around 100 after October 1st.
Because when I'm looking at that, I'm looking at those two things as the two that could generate income, right? I'm not missing anything else on there. Obviously, transitional kindergarten does as well, we're adding kids. And that was going to be my question about full-day pre-K, is that's probably contingent on whether the legislature passed funding for that.
And we also think, I also think our, our programming, the sixth through eighth grade programming and ninth through 12th grade programming is a function of being able to attract families-
Sure.
-into our district also.
So, I guess my question then, just more largely, is where do we go from here? I mean, this is still very high level. Every day is a day closer to the timeline that Samantha introduced in terms of communication, and then obviously, going to the community for a vote. So, what, what are your next steps with the board from here?
With, with the board?
Yeah, well, what are your next steps?
So, our, our next steps are, again, that financial building, I'm sorry, foundation building that Samantha went over, in addition to the awareness campaign. In order for us to pursue that, that GEO bond in, in November, we need, and this is where, I guess, the work with the board, need the support of the board with getting the word out, getting information out, fielding questions that, so that we can build an FAQ to answer any questions that you're getting in your community, in your schools, to, to get the, I think we need 3,500 signatures for the petition, and then, I think that's the first step with regards to the, the bond. The work around our academic program, programming won't stop. That will continue through Dr. Dip Mar's leadership and, and our team's work. And so, I don't want to say regardless of the outcome of the bond, because that would have an impact on our, the facilities that we're able to offer and what programming may look like in the future. However, we still, we still plan on moving forward with the post-secondary pathway courses that we want to provide, and experiences that we want to provide our, our, our students. Samantha is also working with, and I'd like you to just talk about your work with the, your action team, and what that work might entail and how the board might support that work also.
Sure. So, we are going to enlist the help of our community to help get the word out, right? Because there's, you know, a couple dozen people in this room, but a much larger community, and a lot of people that have been working towards this work. As you think about the work that was gone into the strategic plan, the Facility Master Plan Committee that Darren ran last year, or the year before, I can't remember, two years ago, and, and then the work that has gone into the Innovative Hub action teams this, this year, that is a lot of community members, hundreds of community members who have invested into this planning. So, we're going to reach back out to them and say, hey, help, will you help us out in, in helping get the word out about this? And so, the community partnership action team, actually on Thursday, is going to be talking about how to support with some other types of funding, like what you mentioned earlier, and, and what ideas or resource they believe is out there. And then, also, we'll be talking about how- believe is out there. And then also we'll be talking about how do we enlist the help of the community. And so that that work will kick off. And then also, I know, I know a lot of the questions have been adjacent to what are we going to tell people and when are we going to tell people? So I have been anxiously awaiting this board meeting so that we can tell people. And I'll be coming back to you in April or May to talk about the communication plan that accompanies all of this as well. So we'll walk through that piece of it and what resources we'll have available to the board and you'll be able to provide feedback if you need additional communication resources at that time as well.
This is also connected to our conversation stemming from the board retreat a couple of weeks ago with regards to, again, this is where I think the board will be able to support the district in helping the community understand the differences between, you know, understanding general fund, but also understanding why we're pursuing the general obligation bond, how we're intending to use Pebble and Save, connected to your question to Eric around having a better understanding of how we've used it in the past. What's the strategy around how we're wanting to use it moving forward? And so we'll get those that information to to board members. And in my check-ins and then in the update, we'll continue to provide information around the funding part of this whole 10-year plan. But then also connected to what's next, Envision will continue to refine the the concept that was shown in the steals and in the video as far as begin putting a little bit more meat on the bones of the structure and elevation. And I'm not going to talk architect talks because I can't. But Envision will install, will begin to support and provide more details around what the facility will look like outside, but then also what will be inside the the building.
Just to add to that, it would, Samantha, was your communication plan, key messages, quick talking points, a quick one pager, easy to quick scan, what, why, how, what does it impact me, quick facts would be fantastic.
How's it going to benefit my kid and what's it going to do to my property taxes?
What's in it for me?
I will not give you a 20-page PowerPoint.
Yeah, I just need a quick whiff. That's all I need. So.
I have a question. This is probably a really stupid question, but the petition language vote, is that something we're voting on? So.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Sorry, I wasn't looking at her.
So we'll get a draft of that at the 20, on April 28th? I just don't, will it be dropped on us the very first time on May 5th or will be there be some back and forth before we see it on the 5th?
We'll have, we'll retain bond counsel who will advise that work. So there'll be a draft language for you to review on the 28th and then
Okay.
the vote on the 5th. This is the final petition language.
Okay.
And what is driving those dates?
The November 4th election.
The 28th and the May 5th, that's what's driving those?
Yes. So because we have to have it on the November 4th ballot, we have to back map everything from there.
So I'm, here's why I'm asking, like, I'm just looking at the calendar, May 5th, we have a board meeting, but there's not one on the 20, yes, there is one on the 28th, I see it, that's why it's on there. Got it. We moved back April to second and fourth. Okay. I didn't know if they had to be like within a week of each other or why that was looking that way. Got it. Sorry, I just didn't hit my calendar up. Yeah, I'm with Amy on that. I'm going to want to see that. Before that, I mean, my questions right here is, the two questions I have is, I want a timeline for a dollar amount because it's still a little, it's elusive. You said about 120 million, but the more articulate we can get there for what we're buying is going to help us a lot. And then I'd like to know what our plan is if we can't get a bond passed. I think that's, it'd be foolish of us to go into this under the assumption that it's going to pass.
And that's an important thing to communicate to the community as well
Yeah.
of what happens for the school district if the bond does not pass.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Thank you to your team.
Thank you.
Let's move on. Item C, post-secondary readiness, the D cap, district career and academic planning. Dr. York or Dr. Dr. York?
Dr. York.
I feel like a lot of these things go together tonight. Budget, 10-year plan, D cap.
Agreed.
Well, good evening. My purpose for being here tonight is to provide an update on our district career and academic plan, which you will likely hear me refer to as D cap for short. You just heard a presentation about long-term planning for academics in our district. And the D cap really operationalizes all of the work that goes into helping every student prepare for life after high school. And this presentation really brings two perspectives to it. So one is the, we have to have a D cap because it's a legislative requirement. And one of the requirements in that legislation is an annual update with the school board. And then it's also a get-to. Because, as you know, being a part of our district, we believe in helping every student succeed. And so we get to do this work every day. And one of the pivotal points of learning for a number of us this year, if you haven't heard these numbers yet, I get to say them again, 1, 2, and 7. And those three numbers are driving a lot of our work around the D cap and around the innovative hub conversations. So here, here you go. For every one job that requires a four-year college degree, let me back that up. For every one job that requires a degree beyond a four-year college degree, there are two jobs that require a four-year college degree. And then there are seven jobs that require something else. So that could be an industry-recognized credential, could be going into skilled trades, it could be a two-year community college degree, some type of specialized certificate. So we have traditionally done an outstanding job of preparing our students for four-year college and beyond. And there's a lot of opportunities for us to focus on that seven and and really expand opportunities and then expand the experiences students are going through pre-K through 12th grade. So that by the time they get to the end of high school, they are making an informed decision based on their skills, their interests, and how that matches workforce trends and needs in business and community. So it's really about a win-win for everyone. So the legislative requirements, I'm going to just breeze through so you have an idea of, this is what we, again, were required to do, but we get to do every year. We are required to submit a D cap for our district, and it is due at the end of March. And then within that, there are a number of required components. So every student, eighth grade on up, is required to have an individual career and academic plan. So again, we say D cap and then we say I cap for for individual students. This legislation actually started back in 2016. However, it's become more and more prevalent with each passing year. There are more rigorous expectations. And so as as you can see on the PowerPoint, we know that sixth grade is coming as that entry level year for that I cap work. In our district, our sixth and seventh grade buildings are already embracing that concept. So when we are planning with our secondary counseling team on the I cap experience, we're starting it in sixth grade. So they're they're doing things already. So that, so again, we've moved beyond the what you have to do in our district. We are also required to have a post-secondary planning platform or a career information system. And we have launched School Links this year, and I'm really excited to share some data with you around that. It is proving to be central, I'm going to use the word hub, I don't want to overuse that, but School Links itself has become a hub for students and staff and business and and industry, a lot of crossover and intersection for students to have their I cap experience as they go through the system. We're also required to have a stakeholder committee. And then another interesting piece about this legislation, if you are as seasoned as I am, I'm going to say that instead of my age. When I was in school, it was really just the counselor's job to get me ready, right? And this legislation is really about that shared custody approach in the school district. We all have a role in helping students. We have to be really thoughtful about course planning. And then work-based learning is becoming, or has become more and more valued through the educational experience and a greater emphasis on partnering with workforce. There's also a FAFSA advisement component. Financial literacy is embedded throughout our system. And then in what ways are we incorporating FAFSA as well? We get to talk about district plan integration. So how are we embedding all of the priorities in our district into the D cap so it's not just this standalone activity or thing we do? And then an annual school board review, which is what we're doing right now. And then a district team of stakeholders, and we've expanded that this year as well. And then we incorporate a summary into our report as well. So the the I cap components, there are five, and they are not linear. It's, they're really about helping students grow in their understanding of themselves and what they're good at, what they like to do, what they don't like to do. And then expanding their knowledge around different careers, giving them opportunities to explore and experience careers. And then we want to help them make informed exploration decisions based on post-secondary opportunities and then ultimately as a senior, making the the right decision. And so we are just scaffolding those opportunities as they go through the system. These are the four foundations of the D cap. And I would say these four words have been a turning point for us this year as we've built, as we've continued building out our D cap. So we, as much as possible, want to make the D cap experience or the the academic and career planning for kids as inclusive as possible. We want to include all kids. We are trying to be really thoughtful of how those opportunities and experiences are scaffolded throughout the system so they're revisiting and building on former experiences. We're also, we're also expected, and it's the right work, to build in reflective opportunities. So give students time to pause and say, okay, what does this mean for me? And what does this mean for my future? And then also that integrated piece, how are we integrating it with other work happening in the district? So this is just a reminder of where we were last year. And so you can see the those components I just reviewed with you are in the first and third columns. And then the ratings on the the performance rubrics are in the second and fourth column. So we came into this work this year knowing there were some opportunities to grow and there were, there were pockets of good things happening throughout the system. And the feedback that we received early on in the school year was the question, what are you doing for all kids? And how do you know? So we were doing input, but we weren't pausing enough to measure the output and really looking at data to make informed decisions for our students. And then we were also charged with needing to build more systems and processes. One of the things that we talk about a lot is we shouldn't have this work, this work shouldn't be person-dependent, it needs to be system-dependent because we want it to sustain year after year. So we've been working a lot on those things this year, and I'm I'm excited to share some highlights with you. So even though this work is pre-K 12, our SIAC committee last June said, let's really focus on the secondary experience in this work, knowing that it's all system work, but from a data collection, we're going to, we're going to focus on, zoom in on secondary. So this is exciting. So if you look back to 2021, 22, 58% of our secondary students that we have evidence of engaged in post-secondary planning. So far this school year, 97%. Now, we still have 3% more to go. And I'm going to tell you how we're going to tackle that. But we're really proud of the work that our counselors and teachers have have done together in ensuring that we reached that 97%. So in your email that you received on Friday, I included some supplemental documents with more details around all of this. And so I'm just going to hit on some highlights right now. And after tonight, if you have additional questions or you need me to resend anything, I'm happy to do that. Because I could talk about this all night. I'm so excited about it. So highlights from our D cap, we've had increased stakeholder involvement, including the board. So in addition to tonight, we have Director Northway and Director Romans on SIAC. And then I've also had the opportunity this year to start a subcommittee for D cap. So Director Gott and Director Romans serve on that. And so I meet with them quarterly to share, here's work underway and listen to their input and their governance insights that they provide from from their level. And then we've also embedded D cap review through SIAC through, we did some work with some of our action team members for the hub. Our district leadership team, which is made up of building representatives throughout the district, has been involved in that as well. So we've, we've vetted it through a lot of different stakeholders and and received input. Our School Links launch, obviously, I'm going to share some data highlights on that in just a moment. And then intentional data collection through throughout the system. So not only with School Links, but we've been talking to social studies teachers about financial literacy and what data collection do, or what, how are you collecting data? And how are you responding? And those are just a few examples. And then with inclusive engagement, our MTSS process and the the HAWK time and the seminar time at both of the high schools have served as time where if we have some type of grade level experience or if counselors are working with teachers on activities in School Links, they are then looking at the data. And the students who are either absent or there where we have data missing, they are pulling them in during that tier-two time to respond and try to close that gap. So again, I think that has contributed to that 97%. We also had an opportunity, I partnered with Nancy Lanen, and we pulled together some secondary special education teachers and counselors. And we called it Transition meets School Links because in our, for our students with IEPs, there are transition requirements that our special education teachers engage with, and we have School Links. And so we essentially came together and said, we shouldn't be working in two different worlds. How do we work together? And so we've trained the secondary special ed team on School Links. And so we're, we've started that journey of of working with them. We also recently had a special family engagement night where we invited families whose first language is Spanish. School Links actually has a language feature that we just need time with families to show them. If you push this button, it will transfer it into your language. And we talked to them about School Links and FAFSA. And so that was the beginning of something that we're going to build on every year. Drafting scope and sequence, we are, we've been working with the secondary team of administrators and instructional coaches and counselors in drafting a scope and sequence in this work for not only students, but we're going to start drafting a scope and sequence with parents. That's one of our next steps. Integration opportunities, a couple of things I wanted to share about that. With social studies, for example, financial, we've had our seventh grade piloted last year, JA Finance Park. It was a successful pilot. So this year, all seventh graders went to JA Finance Park or they will be going. And then we also added 12th grade, all students are required to take econ. And there's a JA Finance Park Advanced. And so we piloted that first semester and received a lot of positive feedback from seniors. And so we have now built that into our plan. Couple other quick things. With career-connected learning, something we've expanded on for our elementary students, as you know, we have a grade level field trip that they go on every year. So this year- So this year, for the first time, we paused and thought, gosh, that's a great opportunity for students to learn about jobs. And so now our elementary teachers front load those students a little bit before they go on the field trip. They come back and they engage in reflections on what they learned about jobs or if there's something that they're more interested in learning about. Industry recognized credentials. There's an opportunity that we've taken advantage of this year. Our Teacher Academy course is the DMAC level entry level course for someone who wants to be a teacher. And we have added a component to that class this year. So students who are in the Teacher Academy course have the opportunity, if they choose, to earn their paraprofessional certificate. And then they can then also engage in an internship here in our district and get them in the classrooms and supporting the teachers in an internship or in a paraprofessional position. Is there anything else? There is more, but I'll just keep going. Okay, School Links. So some highlights from School Links. One of the the reports that I sent you on Friday shows you more detailed information. But this is, I think this is a very informative snapshot that you would be interested in. So right now, this is where the interests are with our secondary students. So having this kind of data can inform us on connections and experiences that we need to be creating. And then this next slide, there's a lot here, so I'm just going to highlight on a couple, couple things. This, the data in School Links is helpful, and here's why. So as you can see in this slide here, it shows arts, AV tech and communications as the top choice in cluster. Okay? But then, when you dive into individual jobs, you can see that nursing is the most popular choice for a specific position. And then business management underneath that. So we, the data available in School Links offers us a lot of different information to design experiences for kids. You can see their post-secondary goals in that blue circle. And that we have students that are interested in trades and students interested in tour degrees and military. Then the the box on the right-hand side, this is just a snapshot of what students see in their dashboard when they open up School Links. So as we learn about opportunities and as we create more formal partnerships with business and industry, we can post opportunities in there and students can go right in and register for different opportunities. So next steps, we're going to continue building capacity around School Links. We, one of the the things that we're doing right now is building out the work-based learning portion of that platform. So we have internships and pre-apprenticeships that we've already created with partners out in the community. And we now have those posted in School Links for those students who are registering for that in their classes for next year. We'll continue partnering with special education in creating modified lessons so that we can close that three, that remaining 3%. And and I talked earlier about where the the Spanish event that we had, we want to include. We just had a meeting on that today. We want to start branching out and doing that with more languages. Solidifying our scope and sequence and then creating one for parents as well. And then, again, just continuing to build out those career connected opportunities. That's a lot. What questions do you have or insights, input? I'm open.
I just have a general comment. They had Career Day at my son's middle school. And I just love that we do that. It's, he got to experience other careers and opportunities, and it was a great wide variety. So I'm sure that fits into some of the work that you're doing. So kudos, keep doing that. I know it's just really well received and he really enjoys it.
Great. Thank you for that.
I have a question on the School Links data at a glance. So the 97% is fed from the number of six through 12 who've just gone through the onboarding process. Is that correct? Okay. And then there seems to be quite a gap with parents and guardians. And so you mentioned one thing that you thought would uplift that, but is there a plan to fill that gap?
Yes. So we had some initial communication this year with our parents and guardians to get them logged in. Our first priority was getting students, and so parents are that next layer. I've already started conversations with our six, seven principals. Because this year, onboarding all six, 12 was very unique. Whereas in next year, it's going to be onboarding every sixth grade class every year. And so we're going to really hone in on the families in sixth grade, starting in the fall. And we already have some ideas on in-person sessions that we can offer versus and virtual. And then work on grades seven through 12 where the gaps are.
And then what's the plan collecting data throughout the time they're with us, but then also after they leave us? Collecting that data of where they ended up? Did they stay in college? Did they, you know, whatever that may be?
So two things. So our state collects that data at a system level, but we're really interested in our own students. So one of the great things about School Links is that it has an alumni feature. So part of the senior exit process is going in and adding their personal email before they leave us so that we can continue reaching out to them after they're gone and and survey them and keep track of where they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I guess one of the other things you referenced, Jill, in the information you shared in the email was about the updated career cluster framework. So of course, my head as a director went to, oh, my gosh, we're putting all this work into building out the innovative hub. And maybe, I don't know, like, who would answer this? But like, do we see adjustments that need to be made based on the adjustments to the career cluster framework?
The, I don't see the.
No, go ahead.
I got the mic. I don't see the recommendations for the courses changing because we were so intentional about partnering with the workforce on those recommendations. How they're organized might be a little different, but the the course recommendations themselves would remain.
I think that's what you, we want to be unique about this facility in that we aren't reactive to the workforce, but working hand in hand with workforce and are able to adapt the programming courses that we're offering moving, moving forward.
The last thing I would say, I would just echo Sarah. I mean, I think every kid is different, but I would for sure, all three of my children respond, have responded much more enthusiastically around like Jack with the career.
Speaker Day?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I didn't know what the name was. And both of my high school kids, just the career fairs and the college fairs seem to be more, for them, more impactful than maybe like the surveys in School Link. You know, those, they're kind of like, it said I was going to be a, you know, whatever. I'm like, well, how seriously did you take that? That's why I kicked that out. But I think, what I, I guess what I want to communicate is that I appreciate that there's lots of different ways that kids are getting exposure to different ways to explore their their career. So thank you for that. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Jill.
All right, thanks.
All right, moving on to the fiscal year 26 certified budget presentation.
Bear with me as I transition. Okay, so I want to take some time to talk through our proposed certified budget. We have two public hearings that are coming up, one on March 31st that will over, that will have be an overview of our overall property tax rate. And that will be the highest we could possibly go. Can I go above that? I'll go through that form here in a little bit. The second public hearing is on April 14th, when it goes and looks at our actual expenditures for all funds tied together. So kind of walk us through what that looks like for this upcoming year. Just like academics, business services is also tied to this mission statement. I want to make sure that it's at the front of us because all the decisions we make within the finance area is directed towards our students and how do we best educate them? Whether it's from a facility standpoint or a programming standpoint as we go through, make decisions regarding is it property tax or overall expenses and how we're doing that district-wide? So you've seen this slide once before already tonight. I want to take a little bit of time to walk through what that looks like. As I said earlier tonight, the first four, general fund, management, PEPAL and debt service are all tied to the overall property tax rate. SAVE, student activities and enterprise funds, which is nutrition, BASB and community ed are all dictated based on fees and gate admissions and those types of things that will go over and, sorry, can help support the overall expenses within there. Again, the top side shows the revenue be able to come in. The bottom side is the allowed expenditures out of those different funds. A lot of the funds can be paid, can be used for different things. Our general fund can help support our overall facilities and what they have going on. But we also want to make sure that our general fund is helping with our programs and making sure instruction is the best possible that we have. PEPAL is, can be used for a lot of different things. SAVE can be used for a lot of different things. We have a revenue purpose statement that we just approved. Not going to quote the date on that part of it, but that really is vague and generic so that we have the full flexibility from a board level standpoint to help expend funds out of that funding source that could be used either for, sorry, for PEPAL or for the overall general fund as well. Here is the overview timeline. So some timeline changes that happened from last year to this year. So the initial property tax statement last year was needed to be submitted to the county by March 15th. They upped it this year to March 5th. So I'm very sorry that they were a little bit backwards on our presentation here. But this is just to help with the overall property tax statements to make sure that they can compile between the city, county, schools and the other entities that need to be involved in those property tax statements so they get sent out on time and as accurate as possible. But here is our overall timeline looking forward. So today we're March 10th. Looking forward, we're going to submit the public hearing information to the register. So they have that March 20th. The statements will be sent out to all property tax owners and that's statewide. March 31st, we'll have our first public hearing at 6 o'clock. Then after that, we'll submit the second public hearing information to the register so that we can have it on April 14th. And then if we get approval from you guys to be able to submit our certified budget, we'll submit that to the county order before April 30th. So some challenges that we have with our overall budget. One is our timeline. We're currently working in one fiscal year to try to figure out what's going to happen in next fiscal year. There's a lot of assumptions that we're building in just because we don't know how this year is going to end. Will a derachal come through? Better not. I hope that doesn't happen at all. But there's a lot of different things that happen. SSA is the other one. They have not set that yet. We're trying to figure out what happens there. One that didn't happen, didn't have, did not have in here, because it just came out on Friday, was overall property taxes. What changes are going to happen? What's going to happen with that side of things? Enrollment, new authority, what happens with that? We're assuming we're going to have modest growth, but will we? Will we have exponential growth coming forward or we just have an blip right now from COVID? What happens within that? We can make a lot of assumptions. We have a lot of different things built in there, but what is actually going to happen from that side? Unspent authorized budget is a separate side. So we kind of have two different things going on. We have our cash side and we have our credit card limit side. The authorized budget, kind of looking what's going on there. How are we spending our money? What expenses are we doing? What budgeting are we doing? As I've said a little bit earlier, how are we utilizing general fund, PEPAL, SAVE and GO debt to be able to support our building supporter program with everything going on in there? So kind of a quick assumptions going on here. I know I've sent this out January 21st. We briefly talked about the different assumptions built in here. Here's where we're currently sitting as of what we know today. I'm assuming SSA is going to be set at 2%. I'm hopeful that we set above at the two, I'll call it 2.25, put the plus plus in there based on what the House is saying. Our overall valuation growth did grow, not as much as the prior year, but it is gross. So that's a positive sign. Staffing increases. Right now, that is just phase one. I did not include in there anything from our negotiations because nothing is finalized at this point. But that's, we're building that in with our overall assumption and five-year forecasting plan that we're, we're planning for. And then again, right now, I'm planning on a zero tax, zero dollar tax increase. Even though the current property tax statement does look like there is a one cent tax increase, that's just because we have no idea what SSA is going to be. So we can always come down from there based on what was published or coming up to be published in. Another graphic that you've already seen once before, our overall enrollment growth. You can see over the past six, seven, eight years, we have had pretty significant growth. Now we're planning on very modest growth. I'm hopeful that we can continue to have between the 60 and 80 student growth on a year-by-year basis. If it's north of that, then we'll have to adjust from that side of things, making sure we staff and build accordingly. If it's lower than that, then we'll have to make a budget adjustments to make sure that we can meet our unspent authorized budget so we don't go below zero from that side. SSA rate, kind of a history going back. If I were to take all of these years and average it out, we'd be about 2 and 1/2%. Is it realistic? I wish I could say yes, but looking from like 2011, 2012 going forward, it's about two point, pretty close to the 2.25 on average. So kind of where we're thinking about, again, I'm thinking that it's going to settle at the 2%. Again, hopefully it's north of that because that will help our overall funding standpoint. Oh, and with this, tying back to our overall budget guarantees, a resolution that we approved last meeting. If the SSA is at 1% or below, we'll actually lose funding without having passed the budget guarantee. So we are close on the threshold. There's a whole lot of districts that are, I don't want to say worse off than us, but we do have that. By approving that, we did build in flexibility not to increase property taxes, but to make sure that we don't lose funding from that side of things. So. Property tax valuations. You can see another graphic of how things are going and what it's looking like. We've had great growth over the past years. Anticipating that into the future, we're looking at about, for our projection standpoint, looking at about a 2% growth from here on out. If it's north of that, that's basically a benefit to us. If it's south of that, then we have built in flexibility to make sure that we can meet the different things between debt service, PEPAL and those things. Here is the initial tax statement that will be posted on our website and will be coming to your social media accounts here soon. Thank you, Samantha, for your help on that part of it. This is what it's looking like, and I know it's very difficult to read. But if you were to zoom in, this bottom right-hand corner here shows what our maximum tax rate could be for the upcoming year. Again, that's our maximum. That's not what we're going to set at. My goal is to set at the $16.05 again, to keep a stable tax rate going forward. But since SSA is not set yet, leaving room in for flexibility based on that side of things. Here is another view of what that looks like from a dollar standpoint and how everything breaks down between the general fund, management, PEPAL and debt service. So you can kind of see the changes in the rate on the far right-hand side within there. I'll leave it there for a few seconds to have you take a look at that. Okay, again, another view of where our tax rate has been. We just talked about this in a few minutes ago with how everything has been going. Again, in the 2011 or 12, I believe it was, we're sitting at about the $22.50 range for property tax rate. We've been doing a great job to manage that. It's helped with have also called expanded growth over the years to help bring down that tax property tax rate. Now that we're stabilizing from an enrollment standpoint, looking at trying to stabilize the overall tax rate so that we can, one, help out our overall programming to make sure we can provide the best programming, innovative hub and building standpoint within there as well. Here is a view of kind of where things is, where things are controlled from a tax levy standpoint. Obviously, the state controls a lot of that based on our overall funding, the funding formula. As we just noted a few minutes ago, the overall property tax rate, that could change how this is all broken out. More information to come as to if the state's taking more on, how that property takes, property tax formula changes with our uniform levy from that side of things, which I can get into more detail if you'd like. But from a high-level standpoint, kind of what's board controlled, what's voter controlled and what's state controlled from our property tax standpoint. Okay. Here is the second public hearing statement that'll be sent out in early April. This one is looking at our overall expenditures and is looking at all funds. Really kind of making sure that we don't overspend from an expense standpoint. This overall standpoint does not, or this overall statement does not have really much to do with the revenue side of things, but more the expense side of things. How are we doing? What is it looking like? That's also a report that I've started to build into our second monthly board meeting to making sure where we're sitting at within those four buckets. Okay, switching over from the cash side of things to the credit card limit, I'll call it. Total spending authority, where are we at? Where does it look like we're going and how do we maintain a stable UAB to making sure that we can fund everything that we would like to, increase programming, build facilities as we would like to as well from there? Okay, this is really difficult. I was trying to put some numbers. I was trying to put some numbers together. I don't know if it really puts the point out there, but the part I want to bring your attention to is the very bottom right-hand side where the yellow arrow is. This is our current budgeting practices. I know we talked a little bit earlier about what's going on with history standpoint. Here is an overall history from a general fund standpoint. This is just general fund. And right now, based on FY '24, so last year, we ended about $21.9 million in unspent authorized budget. If we were to change nothing, our unspent authorized budget would go down by about $5 million. So we're basically overspending by about between $4 and $5 million on a yearly basis on a general fund standpoint. We're still meeting from a revenue and expense standpoint, but just for a credit card limit, we're charging, we were overspending. So looking at this, and what we talked about before was how do we change our budgeting practices? How do we build in capacity within our general fund by using SAVE and PEPAL for things that are authorized from the state of Iowa to spend on, but that can help our overall standpoint from a general fund? So when we change our budgeting practices on a yearly basis for this current year, we're looking at this graph here. The final right two columns is our current year and next year, what we're budgeting. Sorry, there's a lot of information here. I'll try to break it down as best I can. So the yellow side is our overall expenses, what we're doing on a yearly basis, whether it's budgeted or actual. The maroon is our break-even spending. So it doesn't really look at revenue standpoint, but it looks at what is our total spending allowable per the state of Iowa? Looking at the funding formula, looking at for drop-off prevention, looking at, oh goodness, I'm sorry, special education deficit, increased enrollment, additional ELL costs above, beyond five years. All those different things kind of set our maximum limit that we can go up to, and what does that show? That's the maroon line. Looking into the gray line, sorry, the black line is our solvency ratio. Where is our cash at? How can we support? What cash do we have to support our overall expenses? And where's that going? The gray line is our unspent authorized budget, our UAB. Where is that at? That is the line that we want to make sure stays above zero. Otherwise, the state of Iowa comes in and helps, puts us on a plan to make sure that we can support our overall programming and overall district standpoint. So if we were to look at the third column I'm looking at, sorry, FY '24, we were about the, oh goodness, I'll call it about 12.3% for UAB. If we were not to change any budgeting practices for the end of this year, I was projecting about 8, 8.5% in the prior CFO was saying the same exact thing. If we were to roll the same exact budgeting practices into the next year, we're looking at between 4.5% and 5% UAB. That's the part that we want to make sure that, at least from my seat, I want to make sure I get corrected with that. So by moving about $6 million out of the general fund of expense standpoint, moving that to SAVE and PEPAL, as we're authorized to do that, will help our general fund to maintain and making sure that our UAB can be as steady. I would love to get that closer to 15 because we have case of emergency standpoint, but now we can help support, we can put potential additional dollars, or as we have growth, now we have flexibility built in there so that we can support programming, additional staffing, whatever it may be within there.
And what's the range it typically should be in?
Depends on who you talk to. IASB says between 7 and 17%. We have on our board policy between 5 and
10% or 15?
5 and 10, 5 and 15. I forgot, I got to, don't quote me on that part, but within there. I like closer to 15 personally because of built-in flexibility, or in case there's no SSA growth, then we can help, we can maneuver that within on a yearly basis instead of having drastic drops, increases and drops. Here is another look, kind of a projection standpoint, based on our changes in internal budgeting between general fund, PEPAL, and SAVE of kind of what I'm looking at, we're going to be going over the next five years. You can see we've really stabilized that. Again, this has nothing to do with the overall tax rate, but again, looking at the tax rate, stabilizing that at the 16.05 based on what we know today, not what's going to happen tomorrow with everything that's going on, but helping to stabilize that side of things and helping maintain so we can help support our overall programming and district, district needs and strategies that we're trying to go to. Very high-level, very quick. Questions, concerns, comments from the board?
Can you repeat what you said, the unspent authorized budget? Did you say it should be above 0%? Is that what you said?
If it, if it goes below zero, the state of Iowa comes in and put on a plan, yes.
It would be helpful, I should turn the microphone on. This, this visual, this graph that's maybe on slide 17, this is new for us, I believe, to see that break-even spending. I appreciate that, this perspective. Somebody up here, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like this is the first time I've seen that language. It would be helpful for me, Dr. Pruitt, if we could get a follow-up of what exactly goes into that, that break. I know you listed them off, but if we could, like what makes that up? That would be helpful. Because I know at some point, you know, you're talking about just general fund balance, but then we've got all those other things that come into play, you know? You talked about DOP and special ed deficit and all those other things. So if we could just get a little more detail around what that, what makes up that break-even spending, I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
The expenditure side?
How about what makes, well, I understand what's in expenditures, but where do we? Something equals break-even spending. What's the front side of that equation?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely. I could definitely put that out there.
Thank you. What questions do we have here?
I have a general question. I was comparing last year because I thought I saw a summer, our summer chart. So when I think about all the sources of revenue, we've got the local, state, the percentages. Has any of those numbers changed? Like federal's still about 2% and transfers, that, there's no big change with any of that. Cracked?
At this point, no, based on what they're trying to do with property taxes, there very well could be.
That could swing a different way.
It could swing that side of things, absolutely. But from a federal, from a local standpoint, sorry, local outside of property taxes, no, there's, it's very similar from year to year. It'll just be depending on what they want to do from a state aid to a property tax standpoint and how that changes.
Do we expect any change or impact to the federal funding at all?
At this point, no, but we're building that in. So from a federal funding standpoint, we have about $430,000 that we get in federal funding. That's not including nutrition, not including Medicaid. That we're trying to figure out, do we need to absorb in other places? What happens? What's the Fed going to do if, if that's still on the docket or not on the docket?
Okay, thank you.
I guess one thing I noticed is the reduction in that debt service to 245 from 259. I guess I, historically, have we always kept it at 259?
Not necessarily. Over the past three years, it has been, but before that, it fluctuated a little bit depending on if it's new GEO bond or how the debt payment structure was happening. And this is to let the board know, this $2.45, 48 cents will pay off all remaining debt outside of interest costs over the next three years. So once, a year from now, all GEO debt has been paid off for Ankeny schools, which is a great thing, but then to try to maintain a stable tax rate, we're kind of up against that for the GEO bond.
Right. Because once somebody's tax rate goes down 259,
It's going to be
they're not going to be excited to move it back up to
Possibly not, yeah.
And slide 12, which is the historical levy rates, is what you had on the screen. I don't know if it was in this presentation or two ago. I can't remember right now. But where you compared us to other districts and we were kind of in the middle?
Yeah.
Is that this same information?
This is just us.
No, I know. This is the same number.
Same numbers, yes.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Other questions? We've perhaps hit our limit with information tonight. All, all integrated with one another, but we'll let you know if we have additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, moving on to item E, Board Member Committee Participation Reports. Anybody have anything to share?
Yes, I do. For our, I'm pleased to announce for our trivia night, we nearly doubled our revenue and raised over $10,000 this year. So that is a fantastic way to help build up our funds that can help support the clubs that come to us for our grants and the teachers. And we also are looking at, it's our 25th birthday celebration. What might that look like to engage teachers, the community around that, to rally around the 25th anniversary of the Ankeny School Foundation? So stay tuned, there's a committee working on that.
We have policy on Thursday. We did table one policy due to wanting, having further discussion. We have a few coming to us tonight as a first and final read based on recent legislation. Or, yeah. Obviously, we'll come back to them at the board table to read it a second time, but that's why there's two sets of policies. Melissa, do you want to add anything there, or are we good?
So for the ones that are first and final read, it's not new legislation, but what's going on in the federal government has
Dear colleague.
highlighted an issue with affirmative action, and we cannot be treating people of a different protected class better than others. So these policies for first and final reading are really removing any language related to affirmative action and treating, for instance, women better in the hiring process than you would a man. And I'm recommending immediate action to avoid any sort of legal consequences. And it doesn't sound like we're doing this anyways, so it would come into compliance with the law and what we're doing anyway.
Any other Board Member Committee Participation Reports?
What is, oh, go ahead.
I had a teacher quality committee last week, I think. We're still working through the certified teacher evaluation process, getting input. A big, I think, happening from the last time we met was the summer academy update about teachers signing up for courses and stuff, and we talked about maybe some holes that are missing. We got some input from the team of what other courses could be offered or what other teachers jump on, and if you want, Amy, that could be offered during that teacher academy time.
Mine isn't really a committee report, but I started my school visits. I went to Ashland Ridge on the 27th and Rock Creek on the 28th, saw their leader and me presentations. Both were completely student-led. They each did a little skit to talk about the leader and me message that they were on, and then Rock Creek had a building-wide dance to work on listening. So it was one of those songs that told you to slide to the left and slide to the right. So that was pretty cute. So they've, Rock Creek, you know, if there's a dance competition district-wide, they've got the lead right now. On March 7th, I went to Parkview for my boardwalk and a visit. I went early to see the, the school play, which is 10 Ways to Survive the Zombie Apocalypse. So a few things that struck with me, don't be the slowest or weakest person in your group, become friends with someone that knows Kung Fu, and just give up and join the zombies. And then we visited several classrooms. I just saw some literally literacy lessons in real time, and then had a long conversation with Ben Hipsh, the principal there afterwards, just on things that are going on in his building.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Last information only, any questions about the contracts and agreements at the building All right, let's move on to old business. Item A, contracts and agreements, may have a motion to approve and accept the contracts and agreements as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
I had a question about the Chromebooks. Can you remind me, is our, what is our ratio? Is it, is it K2, like a 1 to 2, or is it 1 to 1 throughout the district that we're buying Chromebooks for still?
Currently 1 to 1.
And does that include TK, like transitional kindergarten too, or that just starts at the kindergarten level?
The TK and kindergarten get Chromebooks. Preschool's a little bit different, but, but we're 1 to 1 all the way through.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to new business. Item A, policies first to two readings. Can I have a motion to approve and accept the policies first of two readings as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item B, these are the policies Melissa referenced, the first and final read. May have a motion to approve the policies first and final read as recommended. Policies are for immediate implementation upon first and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, may have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing on the 2425 School Calendar Amendment for March 31st, 2025 at 6:05 PM as recommended.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, may have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing on proposed plans, specs, form of contract for Prairie Ridge Fireline Project on March 31st, 2025 at 6:05 PM as recommended.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item E, may have a motion to approve setting the date for the public hearing on proposed plans, specs, form of contract for the Prairie Ridge Chiller Project on March 31st, 2025 at 6:05 PM as recommended.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May have a motion to approve the use of public purpose funds for March 11th, 2025, Capital Crossroads Meeting as recommended.
Motion.
Second.
Dr. Pruitt, do you just want to share publicly here what we're doing?
Absolutely. I've, I've been participating with the Capital Crossroads since 2021, 2022, and it's a organization that brings community members in public and private sectors together to talk about how to improve the Des Moines metro area. And so I, I'm looking forward to hosting this group in our district and share some information about the innovative hub.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, last item. Item G, may have a motion to appoint Steph, or Director Gott, as a, as the director's school board representative to the Polk County Conference Board.
Motion.
Second.
So just a little background here. I received a packet like this in the mail and asked Dr. Pruitt if he knew what it was, and he didn't know what it was. Didn't think much of it. Had some communication from other directors or, you know, board leadership around the metro, asking if we knew what it was. So I emailed Melissa and said, what the heck is this? So it turns out by law that the chairperson of this board, it's called this Polk County Conference Board, so the chairperson is someone from the county board of supervisors, has to call a meeting of this particular board to consider the proposed budget for the assessor's office. At this meeting, this board has to consider the number of personnel in the assessor's office, the salaries and compensation for the personnel, any expenses for the office, and then estimated expenses of assessment appeals. And this board consists of the county supervisors, one representative from each city, and one representative from each school board that has to serve on this board. So there's lots of kind of questions floating around in the school board world about how do we understand how this person is doing at their job when we don't interact with them on a regular basis? Like, how do we determine their, what's that evaluation look like? But at least we're going to send somebody to learn a little bit about it. So, and Melissa has asked Sarah if we can continue to, every February, to put this on our board agenda to make sure we nominate somebody to go, and then hopefully
Have we had somebody go in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
So essentially, this board, the mayors get one vote, the school, school board reps get one vote as a group, and then the board of supervisors get one vote on the budget. So we also need to give Stephanie some direction as to how she should vote, although it's going to be collective school board rep vote on the proposed budget. So I don't know if that was included in your materials, the proposed budget that they sent you?
It is in the, it is in here, yes.
Yeah. And maybe the direction is to, to ask questions related to the budget. Did you have your meeting, Director Gott, with, oh, was that next Sunday with all of this?
It was supposed to be yesterday, but I was unable to attend.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, like, I don't think we know much about this.
No, who was that meeting with? Like, was there someone to follow up with maybe?
Jackie. Jackie Norris from the Des Moines School Board, I'd be happy to.
I was going to say I can reach out to her and get up to speed on whatever yesterday's meeting was.
I think she was just hosting like a Zoom. Yeah.
Like an information type of dialogue.
Probably sharing exactly what we just shared with the board, with other board members. That, that was my, been my impression of my communication with Jackie was, I actually sent her what you had shared and she said that was really helpful information, so. And I don't know, as of like yesterday, no one else had said they were going, so I don't even know if they ended up having it, so. But yeah, I can get.
It feels like the best approach to me is to learn and I can come back and report back to the group what, what we talked about and how we can be better prepared annually going into it. And if there's any additional learning we need to do between now and the next time, we need to do it.
Because when does the vote take place every year? The, this, the 25th.
25th.
March 25th. March 25th.
And I think historically Jackie said in her email, no school board reps have gone.
Yes.
So essentially we haven't had a vote in this process.
They haven't gone or have not been invited?
No, have not gone, have not gone.
She didn't, she didn't say anything about invitation, she just
And I know, I'm, I wouldn't stake my life on it, but I feel like maybe I got a packet about this last year. And I will totally own that. And, and even when we got this information about the February meeting, I was like, you know, I didn't, instead of asking questions when I should have, I waited until after that first meeting.
Well, the other option here would be for us to not participate if we don't feel comfortable participating in a vote that we don't know much about and use this time to learn and not be a part of it this year. I mean, I'm happy to go and represent our team and learn, but
I think it would be good to have somebody in the room to understand what's happening.
Probably going to be like checkbox, we voted, now we're done. But, yeah.
Any other questions or thoughts for Steph? Seems really odd, but alas, here we are. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, call it a day, thanks everybody.